Good evening, everyone. I have 6:00 PM the posted time for the day's meeting, the January 21st, 2025 morning of Mr. Meeting. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, do we have a form?
Yes, sir. We have a form.
Thank you. Next, I recognize Jason Pauls, who will lead tonight's case. Paul bought a pledge, will he?
You please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You please join in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to gather here tonight. God, we thank you for these men and women that have taken on the responsibility to guide our county, those that have been elected to guide our state and at the federal level. God, we just ask for a hedge of protection against those men and women that will put themselves in harm's way for the protection of our citizens. Help us do everything tonight in accordance to your will and to be pleasing to you, for we ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Next, I'll recognize any elected officials who may be present. All right, CNN, next, we'll recognize any veterans present.
I started in the back. Introduce yourself and your main service.
Federal Bureau of United States Air Force.
Jason Pauls, United States Air Force.
Steve Paget, U.S. Army.
Bobby Dyer, U.S. M.C.
Dennis Thane, U.S. State Air Force.
David Cotton, U.S. Navy.
Johnny H, U.S. Army.
All of them have one of the county pins for veterans. Anyone don't have one?
Mr. Ruff.
Okay. Come on up, Pete, and I'll give you one.
No, this is the county's pin, county's seal, county's, uh, met, appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for your service. Next, we'll recognize any county law enforcement present.
Danny Hall, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Darryl Griffin, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
And loud. Next, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Chris Martin.
Carrie Melton, Assistant County Manager. Rebecca Johnson, Social Services.
Jason Pauls, Mrs. Delvaux, Hurricane.
Cole Ferney, Civil Inspection.
So then, go back and work, ladies.
Go, seven, man.
Thank you all. Hey, there.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Lindsay Galette Lee, and I petition for a proclamation in Cleveland County to recognize Cervical Cancer Awareness Month because I am a stage three C cervical cancer survivor. I would not bore you all tonight with a whole bunch of facts. I did just want to tell you a little bit of my story. I am, I was 44 November of 2022 when I was diagnosed with cervical cancer. I'm a mom, a wife, and my life was pretty normal before this happened. I started to bleed June of 2022, and I had to end up seeing five doctors before I was taken seriously because I told them that I was bleeding, something was wrong, and they kept telling me everything was normal, everything was fine. And finally, when I got my diagnosis, by that time, I had to show pictures to show how much I was bleeding out. My treatment plan included 45 rounds of radiation, six rounds of chemo, and five rounds of brachytherapy. I wanted you all to recognize cervical cancer awareness because there's not enough people talking about it. We recognize breast cancer, everything is pink, but not all cancer is pink. Also, because I became an advocate after that, I started my own organization called Getting Good With Your Health. I host a health fair here every year in January for Cervical Cancer Month ever since I was diagnosed. So 2023 was my first cervical cancer awareness health fair here in Cleveland County at Holly Old Park, and I just had my third one this year. Last year, I went to the Chamber of Commerce, and they cut a ribbon for me. The colors for cervical cancer awareness is teal and white, so they cut a teal ribbon for me to signify cervical cancer awareness month in Cleveland County. So that's why I'm here tonight, to let you all know how important it is, why it's important, and what we need to do more to save lives.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold up a second.
Stage one cervical cancer survivor. I was in my early 30s. Cervical Cancer Awareness Month, whereas cervical cancer is a disease that strikes over 13,820 American women each year, and whereas routine cervical cancer screening tests are effective in detecting the disease early when it can be effectively treated, and whereas cervical cancer disproportionately impacts vulnerable communities lacking access to health care and proven lifesaving tools, and whereas cervical cancer vaccines are available January 2025 as cervical cancer awareness month, it encourages all citizens to recognize that this disease is preventable, encourage and support the women in their lives in taking charge of their health, and make themselves available of the tests and vaccines that have proven so effective in preventing cervical cancer. Adopted this the 21st day of January 2025. The public comment portion of a board of commissioners' meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the board to do so. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium and will begin their remarks by saying their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the boards to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation and are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or personal attacks against any person. All comments from the speaker shall be issue-oriented and directly related to a subject that the commissioners have oversight and authority. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to address this board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed.
Thank you, Phyllis. Tonight, we had two citizens sign up to speak. First, I'll recognize Mr. Bobby Dyer.
Hey, Commissioners, Chairman Gordon, my name is Bobby Dyer. I live at 119 Mike Ledford Road. I live next to the 516 Bethlehem Road, next to an unlicensed animal shelter that the county continues to operate. I'm sure all you took an oath when you sworn in as a commissioner. Ethics in county government says the legitimacy of Democrat government rests in the ability to gain the trust of the citizens. Corrupt government officials and staff who fail to uphold basic standards of ethics completely determine the role of public service, as the core of decisions of officials are expected to keep their interests of the public, not themselves, in mind. Due to circumstances pointing to and implicating affiliates of her dog rescue organization known as Care in the misuse, misappropriation, even fraudulent use of county goods, services, and property to the benefit of Care, its animals and affiliates, due to countless instances of a repeated breach of animal services policies and protocol, trampling people, animals, and proper procedures in the process, due to the fact that a nuisance animal complaint made to our local Animal Services Department in regard to her foster location was addressed by a site visit conducted by an 18-year veteran of the department who noted that the location and setup was problematic, but that then was reclassified by supervisors at Animal Services as simply a barking complaint and dismissed without consequences, even through the state cited 14 violations of North Carolina animal statutes, some of which were also noted in the local report. Due to her disgraceful repossession of our Board of County Commissioners, Deb Harden's resignation has been called for. Have you met to discuss her resignation? Due to the fact that conditions for animals cannot possibly be improved in the county or at her animal services facility and animal services department, that is subject to inappropriate overreaching directives from her and because she does not keep the best interest of all animals in the forefront of her actions, including the animals specifically under her own supervision. Due to the squalid conditions brought to your attention of her own animal services department and described by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture in the letter addressed to her as a result of no less than two unrelated but timely letters of complaint in reference to one of her dog rescue fostering locations, due to those travesty of affiliates of her dog rescue organization attempting to set in judgment of other foster conditions in general animal circumstances as current Animal Advisory Board appointees, Deb Harden's resignation has been called for. Have you met to discuss her resignation? If it was somebody else beside the care group shelter, it would have been shut down already due to the conditions of the facility. Don't lend a deaf ear and blind eye to this situation. Act now. Thank you.
Next is, I'll recognize Sherri Crowder.
Sherri Crowder, 1208 New Crest Lane Shelby. Commissioners, after years of my personal support in many different circumstances, she has chosen to continue to operate on and spread untruths in regard to animals in order to manipulate situations to the detriment of animals. After unraveling so many of her misrepresented scenarios in regard to animals, huge discrepancies were found, proving that her judgment does not put the welfare of animals first. Any legitimate animal rescuer should put animals first.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Commissioners, we were presented the consent agenda and our packets. You all had an opportunity to read through those. I would make one note before we call for a motion for that. The one item from the sheriff's office that had requested that donation, a surplus property to Avery County be postponed until a later date, which will be determined at a later time. This, the reason we're doing this is it's not, the vehicle has changed, and this was posted in a legal notice in the newspapers from bringing reference to that in the event anybody wonders why it was removed from the agenda. So with that, Commissioners, you have the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Well, the motion's second. All of us, very well say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Next item tonight, we have one public hearing. Madam Clerk?
After the public hearing has been opened, citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual. Speakers will address the board from the podium in the front of the room, and will begin their remarks by saying their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. A public hearing is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments from the speakers shall be directly related to the subject of the public hearing. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker.
Thank you, Phyllis. As I said earlier, we have one case tonight. This is Plant Department Case 25-001. This is to apply zoning districts and future land use plan map designations to 58 parcels that were previously in the Kings Mountain ETJ or Extran territorial jurisdiction. At this time, I recognize Mr. Martin, Chris Martin, our planning director. He'll come explain this and then prior to the public hearing. Chris?
Thank you, Chair.
Good evening, Board. As the chairman stated, we have, for your consideration, 58 parcels and zoning districts. These parcels are those that extend beyond one mile of the Kings Mountain contiguous city limits, and due to House Bill 909, the city of Kings Mountain cannot apply their services, their planning and inspection services, to parcels that extend beyond one mile. So therefore, the county will be responsible for providing those development services to these parcels. Here is a map showing the one-mile line in red, and then we've highlighted the parcels, those 58 parcels, and you can see those lying along the exterior of Kings Mountain, along that red line. The services that would be provided by the county include planning and development, building inspections, and code enforcement. Before we can apply those services, there's two things that we've got to do. We've got to apply our county land use plan designations, and we need to apply our county zoning districts. So for the first item with the land use plan designations, we really took the same approach that we took with the last group of parcels that were relinquished by the city of Kings Mountain, and we applied the same designation of the surrounding areas. So this map, you'll see two different colors primarily. You'll see the orange, which is what we consider our primary growth areas, and then you'll see green, which designates the secondary growth area. The primary growth areas are where we expect more intense development over the next 15 years, while the green would probably remain more residential in nature. This is important because land use plans are required by the state and were advised by general statute to use them as a guide when making policy decisions. So the next thing is the actual policy. It's the zoning districts that would be applied to these parcels. And staff has worked to create a proposed map for you, applying zoning districts to each of these 58 parcels, and we did that by visiting these areas. We just got in the car, and we drove around, and we got familiar with these areas and these neighborhoods. We tried to learn the character of these areas, and then we, you know, we evaluated the districts that Kings Mountain had applied, and we really just, you know, paid attention to the big picture and tried not to focus too much on individual parcels. We just looked at areas. So here's the zoning map, and you'll see a few different colors. You'll see white applied to many of these parcels. The white represents your traditional residential zoning district. And then you'll also see a few yellow dots. Those are applied to parcels that are within a neighborhood with site-built homes, probably a planned neighborhood. And then you'll see purple, and the purple designates industrial uses. And that particular parcel that you see that's purple is a mine. We've worked to notify the property owners, and we follow general statute. We've mailed notice to all the, to each of the 58 properties plus the surrounding properties. We've posted signs throughout the area. We've placed the ads in the paper, and we've also developed a website that is available through the county's website, and anybody, including the property owners, can access that website, and they can zoom into certain areas, and they can look at their neighborhood and look at their parcels to see what proposed districts have been applied. And so we've presented this item to the planning board, and they have recommended to approve, and they had, they had two suggestions, two changes to the proposed map. Parcel 41860, they suggested to be restricted residential instead of the regular residential, and that was due to it being located in a neighborhood gold run where all the other parcels in that neighborhood were also restricted residential. So they, the goal is to match that parcel with all the other parcels in the neighborhood. The other parcel that they had a different suggestion for was parcel 59382, and they advised for it to be zoned rural agricultural, and that was due to the property owner commenting at the planning board meeting and expressing a desire to preserve a rural character for her neighborhood and her property. And I can back up and show you on the map that parcel. It is, this one here, it's along Alex D. Owens Drive. So tonight, you'll hold a hearing, and then you've got some options. You can approve, you can deny, or you can approve with any modifications that the board sees fit, and I'm available, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Board, before we have the public hearing, does anybody have any questions or points of clarification for Chris?
What the planning board, you done, that whatever Kings Mountain had basically had the zoning, went up to it and just transferred it to our zoning map, right? That ours might be called something different than what it was before, but just basically the same thing.
That, yes. Staff did consider Kings Mountain zoning districts, and then we also took in consideration the character of that parcel, how it was being used in the neighborhood. Our districts don't align exactly, but we did pick the best district that we thought would cause the property owner the least amount of change.
Anyone else? All right. If not, I'll now declare the public hearing open. So the public hearing for Case 25-001 is now open, and we had one. I recognize Mr. Philip Ruff. Mr. Ruff, did you want to make comments? Yes, sir. Would you like to make comments? Would you like to make comments?
I'd like, I got a few questions.
Yes.
My question's, my question's being that when we were ETJ'd by Kings Mountain, they gave us three basic classifications. They give you residential, R10, and R20. The basic difference between was residential, no animals allowed, likely sloths and stuff like that. The R10 was for small animals, you know, goats, pot-bellied pigs, things of this sort. And then the R20, which I was classified as, is for cattle, horses, chickens, and that sort of thing, regular, regular farm-type animals. And I was curious as to when y'all, when you take over, like, when, when y'all, if you've already took over, but the difference in, difference in your, your zoning. I was, I looked at a few of them back in the back, and they, they quite a list of different zones in there, and you got a few agricultures in there, and you got, and they're different, they're green. I'm in the white area now at 213 Wright Road. I'm adjoining a couple properties that were in question, but I was curious as when they do do this, will I still be allowed to have my horses, my few cows on my, well, it was R20, I don't know what it'd be now, it's seven acres. But now I have 19 acres over on the muddy fork that I complement this with. I cut my hay and all, all fit for my horses and my cattle to be, but when the cattle's young, I keep them at my dwelling, and then I'll move them back over to the farmland over on the 20 acres. And I was just curious as what zoning and what limitations I'd have to face to do this.
Chris, he was in the first batch, first group of parcels approved back in December.
Yeah. I didn't get any notification. All I knew is that they had canceled the ETJ, and they're absorbing the responsibilities of the ETJ, and that's, I tried to make last week's meeting, but I got sent over to a building that was closed now, but I made this one, and that's, that's why I want to get those questions resolved if I could.
Can you follow up with him tomorrow, Chris, and make sure?
Yes, sir.
Because he was, you were in the batch that we approved back in December, so your parcel's not up tonight, but Chris will follow up with you, if that's okay?
Oh, sure.
Your parcel's not part of this tonight. Your, your two parcels you're talking about's not part of this tonight.
Okay, well, I humbly apologize.
No, that's no problem. He will follow up with you.
All right, Chris.
I'll, I'll get in touch with you sometime tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
If you would, go ahead, but follow, just follow up with Mr. Ruff if you would.
Yeah, it's a common, common question, common topic, how agricultural and farming activities are related to zoning districts, but in, in counties in North Carolina, counties are very limited in how they can regulate farming activities. So if you have a parcel of land that has any size, then, then you would be exempt from any zoning district that we apply in a county.
He had told me this earlier, but I just, it didn't dwell on me, and now I got witnesses. Appreciate it.
With that, that's all that had signed, signed up to speak tonight, so now the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, are there any follow-up questions for Chris or any comments you'd like to make? All right, hearing none. At this time, then I'll entertain a motion. Chris has his action slide up as we accustomed to, so we can either approve as presented, we can deny outright, or we can approve with any modifications that you see fit.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve the acceptance of the 52 parcels into Cleveland County's planning and zoning jurisdiction as incorporated by reference to the action to recommend approval taken by the planning board, and also a motion to defer action for parcel identification numbers 11615, 11627, 12879, 13060, 13063, and 54373, pending anticipated action by the Kings Mountain City Council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any follow-up questions or discussion? To make sure the board knows what was, were proven, the planning board's recommendations for 52 of the 58 parcels that were deferred to six that Commissioner Harden read off, pending anticipated action by the Kings Mountain Board, uh, City Council. We have a motion second. All of us, very well say aye. Anybody opposed? Right, the motion carries unanimously. Next, we're to the regular agenda. We had one item tonight, which I referenced earlier, has been deferred due to the inability to travel from eastern North Carolina. That seems odd to travel from eastern North Carolina because of weather in the wintertime, but our order can't get here because of ice and snow, so we're going to move that to the February 4th meeting, and then we're on to set some board appointments. The first one will be the Cleveland County Agavazir Board.
Board, you have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you will need to appoint two people to serve a three-year term set to expire December 31st, 2027.
I would like to nominate Russell Corey and Daniel Shires to those two spots.
Second.
A motion second to recognize, to appoint the two names referenced. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all of us very well say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have one more appointment tonight. This is a board appointment, filling a vacant seat on the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners, and I believe this is an non-expire term through June of 2026.
Correct.
So, so, 2026.
So this will be the non-expire, non-expire portion of the term that will, that would have expired on June 3rd of 2026. So with that, do we have a recommendation?
I'd like to recommend Dr. Lamont for that position.
Second.
So we're appointing Lamont Littlejohn?
Yes.
All right. So any other questions or discussion? All hearing, not all of us very well say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Commissioners, anything you'd like to speak about or report?
You know, coming Thursday, we got a lot of things. I wish that the organizations would start looking at this, protect the Thursday night. We don't have enough committees. at this particular Thursday night. We don't have enough commissioners to attend all the meetings.
We'll do our best. We can't stand for the whole thing. We'll get as many as we can. Anybody else? All right, again, welcome, Jonathan. Looking for good things. All right. The next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will occur on Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, 6:00 PM here in the commission chambers. With that, we're on to the board adjournment. With that, I entertain a motion for adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All of us, very well say aye. Anybody opposed? For adjourn. Thank you, guys.